I don't know if they rate it, they're asking if they rate it. I didn't know if they would be. I didn't, it would be equal to an argument.
Uh huh. Okay. Copies, it says the following minutes, here in pants, coming from four. Copies of draft minutes from May thirteenth, twenty first, twenty ninth meetings have been posted on the city website. The many copies of committee reports have also been posted on the city website. We had five communications. Uh. Including one from Matt Morel. Regarding eleven Martin Street, uh, we had two. Uh. HPD communication, which will begin at midnight. So, let's begin. I take it no one's in fires here. Is there a fire incident going on right now, you know?
Yeah.
I believe there is.
Yes, yeah.
That's what I thought. So, let's start with seniors. Mia. They're here, but you're muted. Mia. You're muted.
Did the communications from morale come in later than this morning? Because I wasn't there when I looked.
There, I'm right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Me too.
Then, well, I think you saw it.
I know, I've never saw it.
Oh, that's why I'm glad. Yeah, plenty of that.
Although it's the seventh.
There was four of them, wasn't there? We weren't actually including, you know, all those seven.
I, I was told about it, but I haven't seen it.
Mia, are you there? You're muted. Ah, well, forget it. We know. Right. Right, it's a senior. Your person. Oh.
Timing.
Yeah, I do.
We're.
That's what I thought. That's why I went ahead. So, go ahead, Mia.
Make it real quick.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, so for the month of May, we had thirty-four calls. Um, the breakdowns are not correct, because not all the calls were recorded yet for the month. Uh. Fourteen of them were false alarms, I know that. Um, and for the year, we're at a hundred and seventy, seventy-seven calls as of the end of the month. Uh, of May. So, we're, uh, about where, about on track for, for normal. So. Probably over four hundred each year. That's our six-year rule.
Boy, called you out ten minutes ago.
Rhode Island rocks. Steve from the channel.
Yeah. Okay, any questions from council members? Any questions from the public? That's a certain three. Thank you, Nick.
See, thank you.
Uh, Mia, can you hear me? Man? Seems they thought off. So I guess we'll go to, um, youth department.
Wish I were as well as Nick, that's a good thing. All right, follow everyone's. Uh, so we are winding down the programming. This week is our last week of programming, and the following makes sure you're comfortable. Um, so four different union with younger kids, they've been having a great month. They spent a Wednesday outside because it was so nice. Um, we're still doing Beautiful Racket, cooking with Sylvia Center, they've done huge hits, and Vindalstift Circus. Um, they're really enjoying the last few moments at the church, and we are, have been sad when they're in the water with us. Uh, I got some photos, uh, we got some photos of some of the arts projects they were doing with the, uh, art school, Columbia County. Um, we're going to have the youth center. Again, we're winding down there. Uh, they're talking about their summer plans. We're talking to some of the older kids about some options for Oakdale Summer Camp. Uh, we have over fifty kids sign up for our eleven, two, thirteen age group, which is the most big man in that age group since I started. Um, I'm looking to find some alternative things to do with them, so we're talking to them of programming, seeing if they have any ideas. We also took a field trip to Dutchman's Landing last week in Catsfield. Uh, the kids really enjoyed the playground. They really enjoyed the zip line. So. And I've got some photos of that. Um, I might have photos of our class as well. So Summer Camp, you guys heard me talk about that. We officially closed registration for twenty twenty-four. We have a few people that were waitlisted that we're gonna see about getting them, um, signed up. We had over two hundred kids registered at the end of the, um, time period when we closed it down for the contest. Last year, we only had a hundred and eighty kids registered, so that went off. We actually, as of now, with the waitlist kids we had, added two hundred and fifteen kids sign up for camp. I think we have about five more that we're gonna let, um. Do I mispronounce? Say they thought they filled up the form, but had some issues with it. So. Uh, we don't have the information on that yet, you know, resident, non-resident, all that, but once we have that compiled, we'll share with the community. We have an informational meeting on July fifteenth this weekend for our, or not July, June fifteenth, I wish July, but it's June. That would be way too late. For all of our parents and family members and guardians who signed a kid up, we'll have an informational meeting so we can talk to them about camper expectations, field trips, transportation, all of that, so that we can make sure everyone has the information they need for that. Um, registration and attendance. We didn't have any kids registered for K through two or teen this month. We did have one extra kid for third through eight. Um, our daily average for kindergarten through second was twenty, which was the same as last month. Our daily average for three through eight was thirty-three, which is slightly higher than last month. And the daily average for teens went down to thirteen students, uh, which was a slight decrease from last month. Uh, but it really, really varies day to day. Like, one day we had thirty-one kids there. So teens are just very unpredictable. You never know what's going to be more exciting than the last one any given day. Um, below the daily attendance of sixty-six students with all, across all the age groups. And you serve six hundred and thirty-six snacks and four hundred and forty-six meals this month. Speaking of meals, I did retransitions this time. Uh, we've been having Sylvia Center, um, cook for us on Wednesday. No, on Monday. Yeah, Wednesdays, nothing that matters. Um, they're bringing in the kids from Perfect Ten that they've had a cooking program with. So they taught all those young ladies how to prepare, how to prep, how to do all those things. And now they're coming on Wednesday, and they're cooking meals not just for our third through eighth graders, but also for our teens. So they're making about fifteen meals each night to have their, um, this is amazing feat. Um, I struggle to do it. So, uh, really grateful that kids are really enjoying it. All their meals are vegetarian. Uh, and they worked really hard to find ways to make that more enjoyable for the kids, because their big feedback was that we like having them after them, and obviously they don't do that. So. Um, I had a photo here, but you can't actually see the video with black and white, but they made an amazing vegetarian taco for the kids. Yeah. And really grateful for them to keep doing that. They want to talk about how they might be able to come back next year on a regular basis as well. I'm not sure if that's with Perfect Ten or not, but either way, we're very excited for the partnership. Uh, Oakdale Park. Last week, through the generosity of Friends of Hudson Use, we were able to have a group of individuals come in from Poison Ivy Patrol, and they pulled a lot of poison ivy out of the park. Uh, for those of you that aren't sure what it looks like, I would definitely check out this post, because there's a nice clear photo. They definitely could not get all of it, because it is everywhere. Uh, but they cleared a new spot to buy the platform and back, I think about five feet in on the shrimps the whole way, and then the playground area. So. That was huge, hopefully, by the back. And not only did they pull it, but they took it in our way. So, I'm really, I'm really grateful for that. Actually, those are the people that did it. And they're all creative, so I would remember.
Yeah, that guy looked comfortable.
Um, Oakdale Park. We did it. We were open for Memorial Day. Um, it's a goal that I had for, since I started, if we finally met, so I'm pretty excited about that. Our lifeguards, um, fortunately and unfortunately, they're all pretty young, so we aren't able to be open during the week in June, because a lot of the kids are doing finals, whether at college or high school. Uh, well, we have been able to be open Fridays four to seven, Saturdays and Sundays ten to seven. Uh, and that'll continue through until July, and will extend the hours, uh, until we meet July, up until July. Um. Yeah, and then if you are on the beach this Thursday, Friday, you'll see our new round of lifeguard being trained. Those are um, veteran, those trainers are Trudy and Kim, who have been with us before I started. Um, and that training is sponsored by Friends of Hudson Use, so any youth in the area who wants to do that training, who qualifies and who practices, and then submits to working at Oakdale, gets that training paid for by Friends of Hudson Use. So, I think we have them out. And guards, so it'll be their training, and the rest of them will be their research, uh, good research of some of those things every year. Uh, we also noticed that the old dock is off the beach. Um, the old one that's been here, I think, for a very long time, much longer than I have. I've heard lots of different people growing up with that one there. Uh, it had lost. It had, it passed its usefulness. Uh, we couldn't even have the ladder to stay on it at this point. So we did buy a new one. Anyone notice that in the parking lot currently at Oakdale? Um, it's on two pilots. I watched a video on how to put it together, and they had a toddler show you, so I'm pretty sure we can handle it if we get it in the previous segment. Uh, but I might be over. Um, yeah, we'll have that in soon. We'll definitely have it during before the Fourth of July, um, and we'll see if we can get it in before this weekend. And the last thing is, we are still looking for a seasonal labor, uh, to work in our, to make sure that we can keep that looking beautiful this year. Uh, they need to be at least eighteen years old, so they can use all the equipment that they need to use, uh, part-time season off. I believe it's I think it's nineteen dollars an hour. It's the same rate that DPO pays for their part-time seasonal labors. So, if you know anyone, have them reach out. Or if you personally want some extra work, just let me know. That's all I have.
Thank you. There's questions. Maya, do you have anything to add? Questions from council?
Yes. Um, I'm getting plans in the future if we have programs for early ages, like three to five, two in the day with parent-child.
We are gonna do a baby and me swim class when it brings my husband back, but unfortunately, there's no immediate plans for that because of, you know, it's a old requirement that the training.
When is that going to be?
The mommy and me, the baby and me classes. Um, it's gonna be this summer, and we're gonna put out the, um, registration for swimming lessons, hopefully by the end of the week, if not the beginning of next week. We're just finalizing your studies. Yeah, we'll share it on social media. I can share with you if anyone wants to pass it along. Um, we're gonna do three two-week sessions of swimming lessons. Uh, there's gonna be three sessions each day in those two weeks. The first two sessions will be for members of the public, and the last session of the day will be for kids who can't do swimming lessons.
How old do you need to be?
Um, five. Those will be enough when they get there, like based on swim abilities. And then the mo, the baby and me class will be twice a week, and that's two to three week sessions.
These belts here, uh, they don't, is this plastic? What is this?
It's not. I don't remember exactly what the material is. It's not wood, no. But it's, it's hard to find a dock like the one we had. Well, the one we had wasn't wood anyway. It just looked.
It seemed like wood.
It looked like wood, but it was also.
Ozin-gicking?
Yeah. So that's pretty much the, what you get these days. Yes.
And we mean to just build one of those. I mean, how much does this cost?
Uh, that costs about ten thousand dollars.
How much?
Ten thousand dollars for this? Yep. That's a lot more reasonable prices for one of those. It wasn't money out of the budget. It was partially from the donations from the Oakdale bunch and Friends of Hudson Use.
Yeah, no, I understand, but that's a very beautiful. Nice, nice.
Yeah, when you looked into that, the, the nicer they look, the more the price increases. And this one is supposed to be, um, have hold the lot of weights, be very durable.
Yeah, I know, beautiful.
Yeah. I mean, I love it. It's not, it's not pretty, but it's very, very functional, I'd say.
Thank you.
Council members, questions? Outlook. Any question? Okay, thank you, boys.
Thank you.
Mia. You're in? You're muted. You're muted. There you go.
There you go. Hi. Hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Uh, so thank you very much. Um, our latest update is that we have a dance for Parkinson's, um, which is offering a short pilot program at our senior center. For people that are Parkinson's, um, right now. Um, so we're trying to gain interest, because we have a woman, um, named Catherine Stoyzle. She's a lifelong dancer and a dance educator. She's trained to, um, show folks with Parkinson's how to dance. So if anyone is interested, please, uh, let us know by email, which is our seniorservices@cityofhudson.org, or give us a buzz at five one eight, eight two eight, thirty-two hundred, and, um, so you can get on the list, because we need to find out at least by Saturday, June fifteenth. Um, so she'll have a list of how many attendees, or if she has any attendees that are of interest, so we can get this going. Um, we still have aerobics on with Lynn every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Um, it's currently being held down at the waterfront. Um, every Monday, Wednesday, Friday at ten AM. Um, then we have yoga with Ed via Zoom every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Uh, but no, don't forget that, um, the Tuesday and Thursdays is chair yoga with Ed on Zoom, and the other one is happy yoga. So make sure you know what you're signing up for. Um, tomorrow is the last day of our star Becky with with the Alexander Technique, um, but we're hoping to have her back end of August, early September. For any further questions, visit our, um, you know, our section under departments in the city website, or you can follow us on Facebook and Instagram. And that's pretty much all we have right now. You're welcome.
Any questions for Mia? Okay, move right along. The next step is, um, Chief Franco.
Hello, everyone. Um, so the body worn camera weekly reports didn't indicate any training needs for the officers, month of man. Number of user force incidents were zero. Number of arrests and bookings for the month was forty arrests for fifty-four total charges. Number of emotionally disturbed persons called was eleven, and the number of calls involving a drug overdose or suspected drug overdose was zero. Which was, yeah, for, for the month, for sure. Um, there was one AA where the pedestrian, but that's what we spoke about last, uh, meeting, with Sydney. Um, so we've already talked about that. Unfortunately, one parking enforcement officer did quit last week, so we're in the process of trying to hire another one, potentially two, so that in case we do lose another one or, or off for vacation, we can fill those slots. So, um, that enforcement is still being done. So if you know anyone, um, I did put a listing up indeed, so I'm going through the applicants, uh, now for that. Hopefully, we'll have one hired this week, maybe next week.
What's involved?
Um, I can send you, if you want, I can send you the listings, it's a lot, but I mean, minimum eighteen years of age, it's twenty dollars an hour. Um, quote time? No, it's just, it's hard time for the, um, twenty-four hours a week for that. But I can send you on a listing if you wanted, uh, capacity. Um. Lab day was a success. I know that was for this month, but thank you for everyone, and just the department represented well. Uh, so thank you, and it was, it was a big turnout for the city with very minimal, if anything, any issues down at the waterfront. Um, next week, uh, just wanted to mention, I did mention it to President Di Pietro. Uh, um, I spoke with both Andy Howard and Crystal Peck about adding a toe policy to the code, to the charter. Um, so I'm gonna try to draft a proposed resolution for next week to add that in. For decades, it's been fallen under the purview of the police department, um, and I think, I, I feel like the council should consider codifying it if the council is setting the fees for the city. Um, there have been some, you know, miscommunication with total agencies and some consuls as far as fairness. So I think if we can lay that out, um, legally, that maybe we can minimize the issues in the future. And then I don't have to decide on my own, you know, what to do or what not to do, or have the, yeah, yeah, have it fall under purview of just the police department.
I'm sorry, we, like, T O W, toe, toe policy?
Yes. Yes.
So, what's, okay, so.
So currently, HPD has a toe slash boot policy.
Okay.
That, um, is essentially all under me. Uh, however, the council has the authority to set the limit and the price for toes and boots as penalties for the city. So, um, we're not required by law to have a toe list. And we have, people have to request to the police department if they can be on that toe list, and availability and those sorts of things. But the fees are set by the council. Uh, so I feel like if the council can decide and set those prices, that the council could also set policy looks like, um, and then we can enforce it.
Yes, partly there's no fees. It's the, you, you set the fees, would you say?
No, I don't, I don't set the fees. There, there's a, there's a resolution from, I forget the year, um.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Uh, and then there was, I think it was in twenty nineteen, there was a proposed resolution to increase the boot fee, but that got tabled and it never, it never came back. So. Um, you know, that's one of the concerns for the toe agencies with fees going up, prices and vehicles going up, and time and cost. So I figured it would be the perfect time to try to, um, see if the council can move forward with it.
So you see, our base, the kinds of, if driver, if you sign up, they're sitting.
Well, the, I mean, the code sets the fee for the boots. Um, but I imagine, um, we can work something out with the attorneys of how, how to set those fees for the total agency.
Right, there's a, so if there was a flat figure of the city pattern.
Yeah.
We'd still have to pay the towing company.
No, we're, we're not paying for that.
No, that falls back onto the person or onto the, onto the vehicle.
But I think we established initially the fee of that tow, I think, too, right? Wasn't, wasn't that?
I believe so, yes.
It was like one thirty-five.
I think it's one fifty.
Yeah. Same thing will be.
Right, I'm sorry.
So the fee currently comes to the city. Um, and then the vehicle owner pays the towing company for the tow. I thought, what's that like?
I didn't. There's a, are we talking about for the boot?
No.
For that goes to the tow agency.
For towing right now. If my car is towed.
Yes.
There will be a fee that I pay to the city, and I will also have.
There'll be, I wear tickets.
Right, exactly. And then I would also pay the towing company.
Yes.
To get my car back.
Yes.
Okay. So when you are saying you're drafting this resolution, um, who will be the situation in which you will tow a vehicle? That's already, that's already there. You have a policy on that. You're not, you're not taking that.
Right, we would, we would change that, so it's not our own. We have a policy. HPD has an internal policy. However, um, I think it would serve the city better and the police department better if we could have it in the charter. Um, Albany does it, other municipalities. Um, Albany does it, other municipalities do it, um, so that it's set right in the charter of how the parking regulation should be.
So you're basically wanting to look at all establishing, you want to establish and the council establishes it be?
Yes.
But you also want to establish circumstance where a car will be towed.
Yes. Do you know what's the point piece with other, like Albany and the other cities, um, for their towing rate? It might be similar to what we have right now, um, I would have to look further into it.
So who's gonna take this, legal or parking?
No, just come around here.
Yeah.
Come directly to us.
Who's gonna write it?
I'm in chief of it.
Oh, I'll draft it.
Yeah.
And so are you gonna incorporate into that your current policy, or on plan you would boot a car, and you would tow a car?
Yes. And there's also, there's also things in the code that, that, um, dictate that, uh, so I will just kind of expand on those things within this, uh, policy.
And this does not address, like a lot of the parking lots, um, you know.
It won't address any lot, uh, five lots.
That's all, that's all, then that has nothing to do with you, that, this is just somebody parked on the street or in a municipal lot.
Yeah.
For you. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? The council? Any questions from the council? That's right.
I had a doing experience recently.
Oh, did you?
Oh, you had this already, telling you, Mandingo, so I was actually parked on the Alvin's property. Behind his community center, which is right behind where I live, and they, both police department got permission to tow it, now obviously your, your regulations, whatever you propose to draft, would not affect private property.
No.
But just for the council's consideration, Mandingo charged me five hundred and fifty dollars.
That's the toll.
Yeah, that's the toll.
I think that's also, I think that's also have been a concern from the public, um, with prices and.
And it was a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
I mean, for every, for every day that it was there, and when I went that night to go get it out, he wasn't available.
Okay.
I'm sorry that you experienced that.
Yeah, right, I didn't even care about that.
I'm just, well, yeah. I got, I'm just.
It's like it's all illegally. It's perfectly far illegally.
In the public's comment.
About.
So, so Tom, when this, when this is drafted, do you want legal to take a look at it or just have it come to the council?
Yeah, we'll just get by them. Anybody else, so, uh, I should have a hand up, hold on, oh boy, okay. Bill, is that you? Did you hand up? Hello?
Oh, too bad. Are you here?
Um, I think you should ask Rob Perry to mute himself.
Yeah, uh, Rob, can you mute yourself for, we can hear him, you're saying? Bill? Your, um, hand is up.
Hello, anybody, are you there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I'd like to ask, uh, two questions about parking enforcers, if I could.
Sure.
Um, I'm wondering why, oh, there's four, I guess there were four until recently and one left, why, why are all the positions only part-time? Why aren't there any full-time parking enforcers?
That I don't know, the city changed that a long time ago.
It's, so it's in the code?
Our time?
Well, you say, the, the. The cit, the city changed it, what do you mean, the city changed it officially?
I mean, years ago, probably over twenty years ago, there were full-time parking enforcement, but sometime between then and now, that's changed.
But I guess, I guess I'm asking, is it, it changed officially, like it can't change back, is that what you're saying, to full-time?
I mean, it's possible it could, but that's not a decision, uh, that I made.
Who would make that decision? Any idea?
That's a question, Bill.
Um, I, I only ask that because I can tell you for a fact that the, the parking enforcer who left, left because the job was part-time, and he could not afford to live on a part-time job. Um, if, if you continue only to hire part-time people, you'll continue to have difficulty finding people, let alone holding on to those employees if they actually sign up. So there seems to me there's no reason why you can't have two full-time parking enforcers instead of four part-time enforcers that are, uh, hard to find, hard to keep, and especially in, in today's, uh, uh, employment climate, so, I guess.
Further, thank you.
Well, which kind of, how do you become civil service, right, and then it becomes a test, right?
Yeah, if you're full-time, there's a, a test involved plus insurance involved.
Well, that's certainly changing.
Next question, Bill?
Um, I, I see your, uh, the parking officers, uh, often jaywalking, I know that jaywalking is not a crime, but I'm wondering if you, as the person that's in charge of the enforcers, allows them to jaywalk and not cross at the intersections?
If they can cross safely, yes.
So, yeah, that's the assumption, I guess, Chief, but, so you allow them to jaywalk whenever they like?
I mean, I'm not out there watching them as they walk on the street.
Is jaywalking allowed by your officers, uh, Chief?
If they're not interrupting.
Is it allowed, yes, just yes or no, I, I just wanna know, I'll be, I'll be done. Is it allowed?
Bill? Listen.
So I've already answered that, Bill.
Okay, okay, thank you, Bill. And thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Mr. Perry, you with us?
Yeah, I'm here, it's gonna be a tough thing to follow. Uh, let's see if I can do this here. All right, screen window. Select tab. Yeah, share, boop, okay. Uh, septic for, uh, April was fifty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine, that's, uh, one of our higher months to date. Uh, we, you know, we have increased, uh, prices to the, to the hauler, so, it's not necessarily volume-based, but, uh, still a very good, a very good month. Uh, we also had our annual D E C inspection in May, we haven't received, uh, any of the, the final tally of, of what they found and what they didn't, and what they liked and what they didn't, but, and that should be forthcoming. Also, the Union Street sewer replacement, we did the bid opening on, uh, last Wednesday, there were three bidders. Uh, the lowest bid was called Russo at seven seventy-eight, six thirty, uh, that is, uh, uh, within the budget, between, we had a bond for a million and a half dollars that was authorized by the council a month or two ago. Um, ostensibly half would go for the bar screen replacement at the sewer plant, and the other half would go to this project. The bar screen is about six hundred and fifty thousand, so, uh, we are within the, uh, the financial cons, you know, confines of, of that bond, uh, resolution, so, we will have a resolution next week to, uh, authorize the mayor to enter into contract, and this project should get moving, you know, pretty quickly, we, probably sometime in July, and hopefully we should be done about September, October. Uh, this is the, um, the new sewer main on Union Street to eliminate the, uh, hot, the storm backups that takes place in a couple of houses in the middle of the block. All right, now, water department, we did pipe cleaning, uh, since the last meeting, so here's this blowing raw water into the creek, and that's how we, you know, we flush out the pipes. Um, this is in one of the pits, obviously there was a lot of sediment and stuff within the pit, so you see all this gurgling and burgling, uh, this gives you an idea of the kind of, this is tuberculation on the outside of the, of the pipe, but you'll actually see something similar on the inside, this just happens to be inside of a, inside of a high-max coupling, so that's why it's in contact with the water, so that's how come it's, has this little bit of corrosion. Anyway, it gets cleaned off, and then put back together, uh, once it hits the water plant, we open it up to try and get as much air out as possible, but for the next day or so, it kind of looks like a little bit of, uh, sparkling water up there, and that's just the last of the air from the process working their way out through the clarifiers. Um, one of the other projects is, we have a butterfly valve, and you see the guy from Mullen standing on this concrete pad, that's actually a, a pit, and there's a, um, you know, the back truck, these are the guys doing the work for National Grid, and, uh, but they came up and volunteered, so we appreciate that, it's probably, what it costs is about ten thousand dollars to hire a back truck, and they came up with a back truck to excavate, because there's a duct bank with a high voltage, as well as the, um, the water main going through the structure. And as you can see, they. So, what happens is there's a, we put a, uh, a sleeve coupling over top of it, and that has a saw bit that goes in there, cuts out this little coupon, uh, and then we put this valve, and we call it an assertion valve, into it, and at the end of the day, and now we have the ability to control the water flow from outside the structure while we repair the broken valve on the inside. Uh, flag day stuff, oh, lead service inventory, that we've been going day-to-day, or, I'm sorry, door-to-door for about three weeks now, I think, um, you know, good share of Warren, Allen, and Union are complete as they, uh, continue to try and document, uh, Lateral's Water Services. Uh, flag day, so a lot of the materials come, uh, from the county, this is the county highway garage where we borrowed all these barrels, and then these are the barrels out on the street, we also borrow the county's snow fence, and we install the snow fence here. Uh, and then just afterwards, you know, picking up, using it to, trucks to remove the stairs from the reviewing stand. Uh, here's the truck that was all gussied up with the float for the common council, and that's pretty much it for flag day. Now, I talked last month about the, uh, eighteen thousand pound lift that was in the twenty twenty-four budget, so, as we proceed with the project, uh, these were the excavations that were made, uh, quarter-inch rebar was put in, and these are all for pads for footings, and then the concrete was mixed and poured into it, so, we're just waiting for the lift to show up now, and then have that installed. The, um, we did the chips paving project, we finished that last month, the last step of it, uh, is the crosswalks, uh, the, uh, paving contractor had a sub to come and do the crosswalk, so you can see, this is where they throw the paint down, they throw the little resin beads in there, and then once they sit in there, they come and, uh, blow them off, whatever's left over. And our paintings, we started with the curbs, um, you know, we'll start doing some striping for some lines, and the counties will bring their, um, their fog line and their centerline striper in probably July or August. Uh, also painting, da, 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 uh, we also have the sampling for the truck record, I think is scheduled for Wednesday or Thursday of this week. So, uh, those results will go to the commissioner, and then, uh, he can, uh, transmit those to you. As far as the D, 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 D R I, we did, um, the Louisiana Brothers, who was the lowest responsible bidder, uh, finally made the thirty percent, uh, not for, for, uh, minority women business enterprise requirement, so we did issue them a notice of award, and all the contract documents were, uh, executed last week. At this stage, I spoke with Creighton Manning this, this afternoon, and we need to get a pre-construction meeting with Louiezy and get a schedule from them as to uh, how they plan to start and, uh, what they plan to do first. The, um, Berry Street Bridge, so, Cessla is on site, that's their excavator on the one side, they have another one on the west side. Um, tonight is their first night, they'll start about nine o'clock PM, tonight's work is really installing the, uh, there's a netting that has to go underneath the structure to protect any debris that falls from falling on the tracks and potentially, uh, getting on the rails and damaging the trains, or making them derail altogether, so, once they complete this installation tonight, uh, tomorrow will be the first night of actual demolition, and, uh, you know, hopefully, they should be wrapped up by the end of this week, but you never know with the tra, with the way the trains run and weather and some other issues, but, um, we did put two weeks in the schedule, but hopefully it'll only take a week. The, um, di, 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 so anyway, this is, this should be it, you know, in a couple of days, this view, uh, should be gone forever. The, um, the, the C A C had a tree planting project, so this was us going out and marking a water main. You know, some places, there was a little bit of close proximity between the fence and the water main, um, but thankfully the trees didn't need to, to necessarily be in this area, so they were scooched up further, and, uh, what else do we have, cemetery, just Memorial Day cleaning to get everything all, and, and everything was all wrapped up in time for Memorial Day, so, um, another holiday, done. And that's, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Rob. Council members, questions?
Um, I have a question, uh.
Fair enough.
Rob?
Yeah.
When, when demolition of the shacks was done, the two shacks had already come down, um, were those shacks, uh, documented, photographed beforehand or not?
Not by me.
Okay, my question, and I have another question, is the, the, I can't remember Hudson, when cultural, I, I services, whoever we hired.
Oh, do you remember, yeah.
Yeah. Are they going to be reaching out to people to get photographs?
Since they have to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
For you to be the resolution.
Richard, uh, Rob, just a thank you for all your help with the Harry College tree, uh, tree planting, thank you very much.
Bill, you're welcome.
Not as a project, but that thing.
Council members?
I have a quick question, Tom.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Hey, who was, who, who was that?
This is Ronnie.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, Rob, uh, I noticed, um, a couple of days ago, I mean, I've, it's probably been there for a while, I just didn't notice it, but there's a fire hydrant on the two hundred block of State Street that's out of service, I don't know, just wondering if there's like, um, you know, timeline, I'm sure there is, um, when that might be replaced or repaired?
We've actually been on hold, we've got about twenty hydrants out of service, and it's mostly because we can't get parts for them. We can, we can spend three thousand dollars and purchase a brand-new hydrant and get that tomorrow, but to get a couple hundred dollars worth of parts for each of the hydrants is just, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, they say it's the supply chain issues, but, I, I don't, and you know they're making hydrants, so I don't know why they're not making enough parts to, to repair the ones, but that's, that's it, I think the one that's, on, if you're talking about the higher end by the Islamic Center?
No, this is on, um, State Street.
Oh, State Street.
State Street, yeah.
Um, yeah, that's, but I know there's like ten or fifteen hydrants that are out of services because we can't get parts. Uh, the good news is, we have two hundred and fifty overall, so, there's, there's always enough for fire suppression.
Gotcha, okay, I appreciate the feedback, thank you, sure.
Well, then, did you want to ask a question?
Yes, thank you, um, it was more like a statement, also, like, uh, more of concern, also, um, the, I'm glad you guys are starting to, to work on the bridge. I noticed on flag day and several other, um, participants, the stairs to, more towards the water are very like, kind of like, not as sturdy, it's like weak, when people were coming down, like, we were, it was like kind of shaky, so.
Are you talking about down by the waterfront?
Yes, the stairs, the, the.
Those stairs, those stairs won't exist tomorrow.
Nice, nice, glad to hear.
The new bridge is twice as wide, so, those stairs will be demolished with the other bridge.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, and, uh, anybody else in the council? Republic? All second, William, Bill? And Bill?
Hey, you there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, uh, my question to Mr. Perry is, um, you're in charge of the, uh, fire hydrants, out-of-service fire hydrants, in-service fire hydrants, um, what's the policy, or what's your approach to, uh, putting out-of-service hydrants, uh, to covering them in plastic bags or putting tags on them, what's the, what's your approach, and why would you use plastic bags? There's, there's no cho, it's not, we, we choose one or the other, it's just whatever the guy's put on, the ones that are the, the. What would you prefer, Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry, what? I don't prefer either one, honestly, I prefer to have, I prefer to have them in service, really. Oh, yeah, that's great, so you'd, you'd be okay if they were all covered in?
Oh, yeah, that's great, so you'd, you'd be okay if they were all covered in plastic bags instead of tags, all twenty of them?
Yeah.
You don't?
I, I lay awake contemplating these things, Bill.
So it's, it's not up to you to make the decision whether a fire?
No, I really. Yeah.
What I did for a question?
Yeah, just Rob, can you hear me?
Yeah, sure.
So Rob, just got a question, your voice and reason here, Lloyd. How many E W workers does it take to change a traffic signal light bulb?
Uh, zero.
That was my answer too.
Okay, so that could.
Right, bro.
That's it?
I guess so, would there be a liability to the city if there was an accident where there wasn't an operational traffic device?
Well, listen, we went through this last month, but I love repeats as much as the next guy, so let's repeat it again. The light that you're talking about is a green light which faces the wrong way of a one-way street.
Nobody can cross on the green, Rob, nobody can cross on the green.
On the other side that goes with traffic, or.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lloyd, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob.
Yep, right.
Okay. Uh, we have particular reviews. President Volson is appointing Commissioner of the Department of Introduction and Stating. Margaret and second, the one. The second uh resolution is celebrated this month as L G B T Q plus pride month in the city. Department of Introduction, Margaret and, oh, there's a. That must be us. The third resolution is a senior senate donation which from. What's that? Um, Land and Direction, the second, Margaret and. The fourth resolution. Authorizes a may to execute an agreement with the Munich Collab. Um, you know, you're done with mortgage diligence on this and uh it meets our standards and the. Um, even if we can get out of the free use of the building market.
There's a ninety day warranty, so it's up to us really, our planning board and H P C and according forth and whoever else. It has to help the system and use it um in the ninety day time period.
And the action, the second. First time, go on. Uh, we have a new member of the Conservation and Dietry Council. His name is Andrew Kitzey. And I have introduction, second, Margaret, Ten Rich. And lastly, we have another donation from Roy Pulver, who was a pulver the last. And this is donation to the youth center. Introduction, second, Josh Allen. Okay, we still have some. Still many law on our desk. Uh. Any new world business, the council members, I'm trying to pitch it to you.
Yes, uh, I think it's time to review the parking requirement code. Um, I just feel I know it was eliminated in a few years ago, uh, but things have changed. And there is a lot of developers, they, they got okay, that's fine. But I think there is, parking is an issue. It cannot be solved by us uh putting devices and charging them on, at some point. There are certain parts, parts of the city that um there is no parking. I understand uptown and downtown is okay still, but in writing the center of Warren and on the sides, Union um state. Uh, it, we're having a problem and I feel it's about time to. Review this again and maybe have some uh minimum requirements, I'm not saying every.
The requirement for, for who or what? The requirement.
Developers, for developers, new developers coming in or hotels.
They're, I'm sorry. The way it works is during the seeker process, you're planning, and we're trying to have projects that go before the planning board.
Planning board.
And when that happens. Well, they don't come before us here, um, when they uh go for the planning board, the planning board has to write under secret to demand as many or as few spaces as they wish.
No, they come to us for pilots or other reasons and then we are dealing with the public saying of how upset they are. Because there's no party, we are the first ones to deal with the public. And I'm saying, we're, we have party committees and we have all these other committees, but we're not going to solve, we're not going to go ahead. If we just don't change that law and I'm not saying to be unreasonable because we want the money, we want the developers, we want the hotels. But it has some minimum requirements, nothing unreasonable, so.
What, I'm not sure I understand how this should work.
It, it has to be a scale, it has to be reviewed properly.
And what?
Developers to have a certain amount of parking spots for their buildings.
That was never in the bill, but.
Okay, so I think it's time to start having this. So I don't know, the legal committee.
I think it would be, I, I, I get what Vicky is saying and. Um, I, I think, yes, I understand that there's a process through the planning board. Uh, to look at parking impact of development and so forth, but. We, we do certainly have an issue and I think it might be helpful to the planning board if there were also some guide rails that will, here's the minimum required. Uh, and then they can look at other impacts as well, but I, I don't think, I think it would be okay to take a look at it and. Come up with, okay, we've looked at it, here are some of the issues, this is, this would apply to new development. Uh, this is what we see in other areas, this is what the minimum standards should be, I don't think it, I don't think it would hurt to take a look.
Is Crystal on the call?
Crystal in the D here.
Yes, she is. Is there a way when, when it's an entity that does not have to go before the planning board, is there a way? To require them to provide their own parking?
Um, most of the projects that I think you're talking about where there's going to be a significant parking impact, they actually are going to go through the planning board. Um, and. But planning board aside, I mean, you can have in your zoning code and there are municipalities that have it in their zoning code. Though they typically have a little bit more space available to them, um Hudson's got, you know, constrained spates. Where they would, they do have a minimum um parking requirements and then the planning board can issue certain types of waivers depending on if, you know, there are. Hardships shown that they can't meet those, you know, parking requirements, but. What you're talking about is um essentially an amendment to your zoning code. Um, in how the layout would be and then that would be the basis. For your planning boards to be reviewing it, it's also the basis for your building department if these, if these projects need building permits. Um, it would be one of the checkboxes that would have to be uh, to be marked off. Uh, in the instance that it needs a building permit, but it doesn't necessarily need planning board approval, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for that.
But what Tom, what Tom did say too, just to, just to clarify, that seeker process of the planning boards going through for these projects. One of the things that they should be looking at is the impact on parking and traffic, that is something that they, they also have their own discretion. To be able to implement certain requirements under that process.
I, I think the issue that we hear from the public is uh that issue of discretion. So um, there was a discussion of um. Development, an application for the development on Seventh Street last week. And the parking is at a lock down the block from where the building is, you recall, uh, Dominic. Um, and you asked a question about ADA parking. Uh, and so I think, you know, part of what we're hearing from the public when, when they see these developments is. Well, this is not going to be adequate or this is going to cause problems here and so forth, I think it's a question of establishing some kind of floor. That, that has to be met and then as you suggest, Crystal.
Floor to.
So, but as, as Crystal suggested, you know, we do have constraints here. And then the planning board might have some uh discretion to grant waivers if they can demonstrate that there's a. They can't meet this, but this is how they're going to mitigate the issue, so I, I, I think it's certainly an issue that we ought to be looking at, I agree.
And, and the legal committee is.
I think so, yes.
Rich, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, this might have come back when I was on the board, but. Part of the reason why they got rid of the parking ball or totally whatever is because everyone was getting the waiver.
That's right.
So it was moved, I mean.
Well, we have to review it, I think it's not going to review it. There's been some, we had some more housing, I think we've been, we covered a few things in our city. Uh, there are hotels, but any new, new business coming in, I think has to be. Be really scrutinized because we don't have the space.
I think one of the things.
People cannot park.
It's not helpful, but it's, you know, probably give a certain number of spots for, for restaurants. By the way, it makes no sense, it just wasn't fair, yeah.
Right, you've got to rewrite it, you know.
Yeah, rewrite that.
I look at them, you know, most of these projects you're talking about, almost every single one is, is required parking study by the. By the acting.
Yeah, well, this is.
It seems like all the times the parking study comes out in favor of. Yeah.
No, but, well, the thing is, parking studies, I don't, I don't think they should be. Done from the developer and paid by the developer, I mean, this is by itself is not. Ethical enough, it has to be done, you know, I don't know who's going to be paying for this because very specific shouldn't be paying for this. But uh, this, uh, parking studies, they're very harsh on, I think. So anyhow, I, I think that legal committee should take it and.
Before we started tonight, I was talking to Tom and I, I had done a little bit of research on the minimum parking requirements. And it's. For a thousand square feet, you must have four parking spaces, well, in the instance of eleven Warren Street. That would be seventy-two spaces, they have thirty spaces. And they have fifty employees. So twenty of those people are going to be looking for parking every day when they go to work. And then, and then the city gets hurt, people are, people of our city are hurt at the end, I'm just worried about people. Pedestrians to walking as people are furiously trying to find parking. So.
Anything else from council members?
Yeah, I had, I just want to bring something up, we talked about it briefly before the meeting. Um, I have heard from a number of constituents uh since um Michael Hoffman left. Uh, we've had some difficulty with like this evening, for example, none of the documents were shared on, on the screen. I tried to open share a screen online, I wasn't able to do it. Um, but I have heard from people that they really would like to see um. A return to having someone who was managing the technology side of the meeting so that. Documents and can be screen shared reliably and so forth. Uh, and I understand, Tom, from you that that's not going to be part of the new mayor lady's duty. So I think that that is something that we need to see how well an assault.
I opened up, trying to find somebody. I, I wish I.
Yeah, I know.
I got this done, which was.
Good, yeah, that's good.
The next step is getting done from the start.
Well, yeah, I, I was trying, I had the documents open and I was trying to share. It would, I, I went to, I don't know whether.
Not to argue.
You may have needed to give me authority or whatever, but I, I was trying to and I, I should have, I needed authority, right? Yeah.
You need permission.
I didn't want to interrupt, but I, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We will uh, it was that and so. Of course, if somebody's watching the, on their computer, they can also never decide and get through that.
Well, that, that's, that's what I do, I have. But not everybody's, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, any other, any other council members, on council? Public.
All right, I'm thanking Tom, really, I hope for some, some color on this parking situation, I happen to attend. I appreciate your exasperation, Tom.
No, that, that's just.
Okay, please, if I may offer some color, as I was saying. The planning board last, last month met and they were. Re- uh, reviewing an application for all the art, which is Fairview Avenue, Oakdale. Parkwood, Landwood, and they were by, I think, maybe someone else knows the exact number, they were six parking spaces short. Of the number of apartments, I think it was. Seven, was it seven?
They can, whatever.
Yeah, so I'm just, and then there was also the situation where the people, the locals. Decided not to park in their driveway, to park in the street and that created a police incident. Are you aware of that, Tom?
What's that, I was.
Well, I just wanted to add some color, pardon me for being so bold, just to have a public comment.
That's great. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you.
I, I will point out, I will point out though, that they did that because. It was a, it was a move that kind of missed the point because there are parking spaces on those streets regularly. So you know there was only twenty-three or whatever provided by the developer?
Thirty.
Out of thirty, there were thirty.
Unit, right, and an office, and then a lawyer.
But the point was there's plenty of space on the street, that's what they're, that's what the applicants said.
Exactly.
I'm not saying.
In Oakwood still, they found that Oakwood is supposed to do the uh obstinance parking too.
It belongs in the boulevard, so it should be the same rules as the boulevards.
Right, Richard, yeah, partly it shows the county as well, like state before is a city owned property. Yet the county uses it for their parking lot and this, the, the residents aren't able to use it.
I, you mean the two that they have on the, on the east side?
State and, state before, yeah, uh, they asked from the library. One, especially old library.
The west side of Ford Street.
All the way, right, yeah.
It's the chain.
It's all the chain.
It's nice, yeah, well, that's going to be, we're developing.
I know, but still, I mean, in the interim, it's been like that, where is that going to be developed?
Pretty much, the thing is, it's like, it's not the, the, yeah. It's what they call the health consortium, there's all kinds of random, not random.
Lots of things, all those cars also that they just park all the time.
I know.
It's, I mean, there's lots of parking lots, but a lot of money coming as well.
They all.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
It's true. And I mean, I think.
I mean, that's one of the things our parking study said, which we should be, activate more of the county lots while they're not removed. And the one at three thirty-nine, yeah, almost everything from the north side, across the street.
So can the city um occupy the county lots?
Can we like?
Can, I mean, city residents can occupy county lots, no, but county people can occupy cities.
Just that one lot that they get away with, but not for long.
Okay.
Uh, Robert, did somebody else, you got?
Uh, friendly neighborhood immigrants trademark, please, please, thanks a lot, I do, uh, thank you for voice and reason, very appreciate your input, I appreciate. Um, general comment for later, um, work into the legislation. As one of the probably biggest payers for parking fees, I'm happy, so Ben Hudson. Um, no, I, I, I mean, it's, it's good relief for the town and it's valuable parking spot. But um, it's always empty in the mornings, even on Thursdays and Fridays and really full in the afternoon and weekends. And you can probably charge thirty, forty, fifty dollars from noon onwards. And in the mornings when this all has suddenly ends with April three, and I know you guys are thinking about it, just a vote for you guys to. You know, do that because um the out-timers would not link at, as you know, Floyd. All Warren.
Expect a, a version of search pricing.
Yeah.
So by, so we change it and if you have a chaos, it'd be easier to do. And uh, you know, the, the high, the times that mostly out-town people coming here makes more sense to have.
Well, it's really Sunday, it's on.
Water is quite sensitive and then you go to the farms right town, we come in here and I need to get provisions, don't stress about it and run out.
Or is, our parking study suggests that make charge on Sundays when there are a lot of people here and give like a Monday, Tuesday, a weekday or two, three.
That was the right.
Yeah.
We don't need the study, maybe some years soon, just drive down.
Yeah, and you know, I think, Tom, something else, the parking committee, maybe, I don't know if you're looking at it or not, but could, should consider. Is some form of resident permits.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that, you know, you have a situation, you know, yeah.
We talked about it, it's a real hard process, but we can, let's try it again, I mean, we have a lot on our plate and uh, we're trying to. Deal with the, we're doing K I situation first and yes, that is definitely something.
Yeah, I think they tried it a while, but, but the hospital, you do have parking, but you're in hospital. If resident parking just in Columbia Street. I haven't.
The problem was you can't, apparently you can't really do it parking or something like that, and Crystal might have more insight into this, I don't know. Kinda.
Um, I'd have to look into it. Um, I'd have to look into it. I know the city of Albany implemented the residential and commercial, um, parking permit system ten years ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, um, but I would have to look into it.
They did the entire city.
No, they do.
I think they did it by certain areas, I, I, by the, the business areas and some of the residential areas.
Yeah, a friend of mine had, where she lived, the block, the street directly in front of her apartment was resident permanent parking.
Okay.
Only. Um, and so usually how it's done is by, you know, you designate certain blocks, it's not continuous, not the whole city. But you can do that and then you have some place that residents can at least find somewhere to park.
Hmm.
Uh, and the other option is you have, uh, a resident permit so that you get a discount on the meter parking, so you don't necessarily have the entire, you don't designate the, the strip as resident only, but if you have a permit, you don't have to feed the meter. So there are a couple of different options for it, but yeah, the, the one, the one that I was familiar with in Albany and Philadelphia was, you know, partial blocks would be designated for residents.
Well, someone wants to contact. Do you, Don, do you remember who was, who was looking at that back in, oh, it must like two thousand fifteen?
Oh, I, I, that's a good question. I always, it was under, uh, Collette, Mr. Matt.
Yeah. Sorry, Don, I can answer that question if you want to pursue it further. Every will. Anything else? I'll work for council. And that's it.